Time for the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education and the semi-annual Violence, Vandalism, and Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Report. Roll call of the board, Mrs. DePompo.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Dr. Lowe is on her way, she said she might be running in at the last minute. Mrs. Mangano also is expected shortly. Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Moretti will be out this evening recovering. Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
A quorum is present, shall we rise to salute the flag and then remain standing for a rendition of the National Anthem? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for
That was really good. That was beautiful.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, we have the certificate for Eliana Mendelberger from Middle School North for her rendition of.
Thank you. Impressive.
Thank you, Eliana.
Adequate notices of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on February 10th, 2017. It is now time for a presentation on eighth grade science and student recognition. The Board President Superintendent's remarks regarding those recognitions. Your remarks, sir.
Who would that be? I will happily defer to the superintendent.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have two really important student recognitions. One is a follow-up to our Community Interaction Meeting where we had some of our students from Middle School South come out and present to our community on next-gen science standards and how that movement is going and the impacts, how it's impacted the instruction and the learning in the classroom with this. Ms. Fedina, are you going to introduce Danielle or? So at this point, I'd like to introduce our science supervisor for the school district, Ms. Erin Fedina.
Sure, go ahead. (audience clapping) They have done a remarkable job in implementing the new next-generation science standards. And what they're going to do today is give you an overview of those new standards and all the interesting and fun activities that are taking place within the classroom.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very proud to have a group of students from my eighth-grade classroom here. So instead of listening to me tell you about the next-generation science standards, I think the best way to hear about it is to hear it from the students and see their perspective. So they're going to tell you a little bit about how I've been implementing the next-generation science standards in my classroom. Introduce yourself as you come up.
I'm Lauren, and we are students from Ms. G.'s eighth-grade science class and a part of Howell Middle School South's student body. In difference from past years, we have recently incorporated next-generation science standards into our curriculum. My classmates and I are here today to discuss how the new platform affects us and our learning experience.
My name's Liam Marr. The three-dimensional learning part of the next-generation science standards is one of my favorite parts. Our teacher, Ms. G., uses the next-generation science standards in her teaching to help us as students expand our knowledge on the topic that we are learning. What she does is allows us to develop our own ideas on the topic and learn independently. This can help the students better understand the topic that we are learning through challenging activities and exciting labs that the students obtain knowledge from. This leads over to the next point, which is disciplinary core ideas. Without using the textbook, we use our ISN notebooks, or interactive science notebooks, and Schoology to help us use not only in the science classroom, but we also use the topic that we learn in the real world. Students are doing science, not just learning material for a test. We use these ideals in multiple topics that we've learned so far during this school year. The topic that was my personal favorite was climate change. We first started out by learning through PowerPoints, which showed climate change data, articles, and different sources. Then we used our knowledge and applied it to the things we do in class, such as adaption and mitigation strategies on whiteboards, and the knowledge we learned from websites like the EPA website. We presented these to our peers and conferred on the information provided. These are just examples of how we use disciplinary core ideas in the classroom.
Hi, I'm Erin, and whenever we begin a new topic of study, Ms. G. introduces an event in the real world that correlates with our topic to engage us in what we are learning. She calls this phenomena. For example, when we were starting our global climate change unit, we annotated a text from Earth Week about the melting ice caps. In the article, there was information about penguins trapped on ice glaciers, surges in greenhouse gases, and the melting ice caps. All of this happened because of climate change. It was up to us to find out how. When we finished the unit, it was clear how and why these events were happening. The glaciers were breaking apart because the ice was melting. The surges had reached an all-time high. The ice caps had reached a record low. And I can honestly say that my intrigue in finding out why these things happen drove me to do so.
Hi, I'm Olivia. The next-generation science standards pushes students away from learning with textbooks. In place of them, we use our interactive science notebooks. In these notebooks, we have our learning targets, take notes, keep all the information we learn in class, and also exemplify how we think like scientists. Individual creativity can be seen in every notebook because students design each page and take notes in their own preferable style, as can be seen in the pictures of these notebooks on this slide.
So as Olivia mentioned, we don't use textbooks in class. We instead read shorter concise articles, which allow us to understand the material easier. We independently read a short passage from Live Science News explaining the different types of fossils and how they are formed. While reading, we highlighted any key ideas and wrote any questions we had in the margin. We then would have a class discussion where we addressed any of our questions and made sure we fully understood the topic. Then to make understanding the material even easier, we transferred the information from the passage into a chart, which me and my peers felt was a lot easier for us to comprehend.
The implementation of science and engineering practices allows us to do hands-on work in the classroom and enables students to solve real-world problems and work in real-life scenarios. This often ties into STEM, although it is not limited to just that. An example of science and engineering practices implemented into our curriculum was in our toxic popcorn experiment. Students collaborated in order to create a contraption that would transfer the toxic popcorn into the safe container without their bodies crossing the contaminated zone. Similar to science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts are the ideas used to apply scientific disciplines. This notion is incorporated in order for students to push for higher-level thinking. Cross-cutting concepts are implemented in our classroom when we analyze data. We look for patterns or anomalies in the data with the use of seven principles, which are cause and effect, structure and function, scale, stability, and changes in matter and energy patterns.
We used the FET simulation that modeled the greenhouse effect to explore the effects that the greenhouse gases have on the earth. We were able to create our own atmosphere and see how the different forms of energy affected it. We also shot photons at different kinds of greenhouse gases. And we were able to see the greenhouse effect in a different way. We also created a greenhouse effect model in our ISN using information that we learned from previous labs. This helped us to see the greenhouse effect in the way that we see it, instead of just copying off of someone else's picture. Another lab that we conducted is a lab that modeled the greenhouse effect. We covered the top of a tank in plastic wrap and left another one uncovered. Then we shined a light on both of the tanks. We read the temperatures and compared them using charts and graphs. All three of these activities helped us to explore the greenhouse effect in a fun way that was easy to comprehend.
To write a claim evidence reasoning, students first start with a claim, which is usually based off of the big question of the unit of study or based off of research that we completed in class. In order to continue any further, students must be very well-educated about the topic. For our evidence, we look back through our notes that we completed in our classroom or research, and then explain those in our reasoning. Because writing long is a new skill for many of us in science, Ms. G. provides us with a graphic organizer to help us arrange our thoughts. On this slide, you see two different examples of students who wrote a whale CER where they had to support or oppose the claim that whales evolved from a wolf-like land mammal. To sum up our presentation, my peers and I support NGSS. The abstract program changes our learning experience by creating more hands-on learning. The topics and lessons presented today help us to create a deeper meaning of learning science concepts. In conclusion, NGSS has made science more interactive for my peers and myself.
Yeah, we're going to take a photo in just one second. Present you all with a certificate. Mr. Bon Giovanni is coming up. Okay, the first thing I want you to do. Mr. Gorman, right? Yeah. The first thing I want you to do is come over here, because the people who are watching this at home just got to hear you for 10 minutes. I want them to see who they heard. There's a lot of athletes in the room, and these guys are doing the same thing that you do every time you go out in terms of you're always going for your team best, your personal best. You saw one slide where it was they approached things a little bit differently. Some of you as runners might go out and you go right from the go. Some of you might lay back and try to catch up later. But what you all do is you work together as a team. They were doing the same thing in the classroom in terms of approaching it differently, but it was still coming together as teamwork. I was fortunate enough with Mr. Gorman and a couple of other members, I think, to see a longer presentation of this at a meeting, and I really wanted to invite them here to show off what they do tonight. I will tell you that these cards were comfort level only. I'm telling you, every one of them knew this without having to look at a piece of paper. I really want to thank you. I want to thank you for giving them the opportunity to learn in a great way. They're learning how to ask why. They're learning how to ask what. They're learning how to do it on their own. It's great. So thank you very much, all of you. And at this time, Ms. Fedina will assist us in the handing out of certificates of appreciation for your presentation. And while Mr. Bon Giovanni spoke so eloquently about the work that you saw tonight, and we so happen to be recognizing our cross-country team tonight, so we have a full house, I want to take that opportunity to say this. And I want to commend this board for giving time to celebrating children's successes, both in the athletic arena, but certainly in the classroom. Because when boards of educations and administrations and school districts focus on children learning, the outcomes are undisputable better, and the outcomes are standing in front of you this evening. We heard in that 10-minute presentation about personalized learning, I don't know if you caught it, but you saw their personalization in their notebooks. We talked about transformation of education that perhaps isn't a common conversation in this country today, but the reality is, in public education, we're seeing great opportunities for children to advance their learning in ways that are unique for each of them. So thank you for being champions of our work. Mrs. G., thank you for always being in the forefront and celebrating your students and your work, and you are truly a source of pride for this entire community. Thank you.
I would like to thank Erin Brady.
Which so happens to be your maiden name.
Yeah, that actually is my name.
Little side note.
Lauren Winkley.
Look at all these women in science and STEM, right?
Liam Mayer. Thank you very much.
And I'll ask that our science leaders just sit tight as we take an opportunity to recognize some of their schoolmates and their efforts that took place during our cross-country season. We have Dr. Hennig, our Middle School South principal, here with Mr. Higgins. Where's right? Mr. Higgins, and there he is. He's making his way down, and they'll be presenting to you our division cross-country team from this past fall. Who's going to be joining? Mr. Miller and Mr. DePompo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Raymond Higginson. I'm the coach of the Howell South cross-country team. Before I call anybody's name, I just want to give you a little history about our cross-country team at Howell South. We have a reputation of being one of the best teams in the county year after year. The boys have steadily been in the top five in the county for about 10 straight years. This program is considered sort of like the New England Patriots of the cross-country team, all right? People come and they run against us because they want to run against the best, and that's the truth. This year, they were outstanding, and I'll tell you a little bit about that after I calm down, all right? Matt Rosenberg.
Mr. Higginson, I think maybe because of the large number, we'll hold our applause. We'll line them all up and we'll give them one.
Yeah, I told them to stand behind me.
If you go a little smaller, run smoother, and we'll be able to hear everyone's name.
Brendan Vogel. Richard Shenton. Shenton, sorry. And his brother. Oh, no, it's not in royal order. Chris Patel. You want to just give me that? Aiden Moran. Gerard Marshall. There you go, brother. Andres Camacho. Luke Mann. Christopher Mitchell and Will Mitchell. Aiden Corzin. Am I saying that right? Adam Corzin. Did I say that right? And last, but not least, Mr. Matt Bogdan. Just a little follow-up about this team. It's a pleasure to coach a cross-country team at any time. This is one of the best sports to coach, period. You get a very good quality type of kid, somebody that's dedicated, somebody that understands what pain is about, that's for sure. And it was exceptional pleasure to coach this team this year. A gentleman that needs to be spoken about a little bit more is a gentleman named Matt Bogdan. Please step up a little farther, Matt. Matt was easily the best runner in the county. He did not lose one meet. And we have a gentleman that ran at our school a long, long time ago, who ended up being a Big Ten championship, a Big Ten champion from Michigan, ran in the trials for the Olympics. So there was a record time at our school that was like out of control, below eight minutes for a mile and a half. This gentleman got within 12 seconds of that time. So we're talking about a kid that could have a future. I'm going to put a little pressure on him. Hopefully, one day, we'll see an All-American. Give a round of applause to the cross-country team.
So if we can just, Dr. Hennig, if you can organize your troops here for our photo op, we'd appreciate that. So while we organize the kids, you know, it's important to recognize effort and success. And Dr. Hennig, I know personally this is a source of pride for you because I can remember serving here at Middle School North as principal, and you were the vice-principal, if you remember. And Mr. Kunkada, who I believe is here tonight, had an outstanding run in cross-country success here at North. So it's great to see Howell teams back on top here and keeping those traditions alive. So congratulations, job well done to all our participants. You too are also a source of pride. All right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Sanisak, shall we take a two-minute recess?
Yes.
To allow the parents and children?
We should take a break for those to leave and go do homework, but also, the board is in need of executive session.
Very good.
So if we can just adjourn to exec and either before or after, and Ms. Mangano's here, so before we go to exec, if we could all assemble for the annual photo right behind this board, and then the board will be exec if we can have a motion and a second for that.
All right, we're in exec.
Please note the minutes.
Move it.
Moved by Ms. Malley, second by Mr. Miller. Can I take it around, sir?
Please do.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. DePompo.
Yes.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
The minutes are approved, eight votes in favor, none opposed. Correspondence that the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the Board President's comments. President of the Board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien.
Thank you. First of all, I want to start off by commending our staff and the students for sharing with us some of their talents, and I was particularly impressed with the young folks presenting on the new science standards. I kept thinking to myself, my God, they look like high school students, you know? They're very, very possessed, very articulate, and obviously, an exciting thing when students are that fired up about a change in curriculum. It's what you want. This board has made its focus, student achievement, of course, and one of the things that we appreciate is the opportunity to see that here as a board. And also, the athletic achievement of our middle-school team. I mentioned to a couple of the folks there that they have to come down to the race to educate, which will further put the nail in the coffin of my hopes of ever getting anywhere in the top half, but because, I'm sure, but you know, the important thing is that it's really impressive when we look at the combination of academics and athletics, students, scholars, who are also great athletes. They go hand-in-hand, and thank you to everyone that makes that possible. I'd also like to talk a little bit, we had the opportunity to take a retreat on the 28th, which was well-attended, and I want to first thank Dr. Lowe, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Preston, Mr. Sanisak, for their participation and for all the board's participation, everyone that was able to make it, because I feel that the ability to sit down and really focus on what's important and share with each other, and Dr. Lowe, that icebreaker was terrific, because we had the opportunity to share in some educational exercises that gave the board a look into some of the current techniques that educators are using in the classroom. And we got to work collaboratively with each other. I think everyone found it to be extremely helpful, and it helps us to build, you know, momentum in terms of our focus on policy and student achievement, so. And we were also able to have the participation of our field rep from New Jersey School Boards, Kathy Weinkoff, and the board accrued another four hours of credit towards its master board certification as well. So thank you to everyone who came out on a Saturday to participate in such an important endeavor. It really is meaningful. I'd also like to report on some progress, which we'll go into a little further. We had a great meeting with the township, you know, Mr. Bon Giovanni and I representing the board, our superintendent, our business administrator, Mr. Sanisak, sat down with the Howell Township manager, the chief of police, and several of his officers, as well as newly-elected Mayor Berger and Councilman Walsh, to discuss a shared service agreement regarding the new Class III law officers. And the superintendent will go into more detail, and I'm excited on how that is progressing. So again, thank you, everyone, for their participation there. It's been a long road to making this reality, and we're still on it, so thank you. With that, I'd like to conclude my remarks and turn it over to my superintendent.
Thank you, sir, and good evening. Welcome to our February meeting. A lot has happened, and this report will be a little, believe it or not, a little lengthy as comparison to some of my brief, concise remarks that happen on a regular basis. So I will start by saying I ask for your patience, there's a lot of important topics here. First, we celebrate Black History Month during the month of February each year. We have Mr. Javi here, our so-study supervisor, who kind of organizes and spearheads the work to ensure that the important lessons that accompany the recognition of Black History Month are ongoing in all our schools, and I know that Dr. Lowe and- And I know that Dr. Low and Mr. Preston had that as an agenda item, and I'm sure we'll hear something from the education committee update from last Monday. So, but certainly, as a school district, we are participating and take great pride in that, in the importance of celebrating and continuing the important lessons that are learned from our rich history. So that's an ongoing process throughout the month, so I did want to make sure we did that. This evening, Mr. Sanisak, we'll be doing our semi-annual Violence and Vandalism update. Is that something you have to open for, am I tabling that for now?
When we get to the first public comment, we open the first portion of it as a public hearing on that topic.
Well, we can certainly give our report now, yes?
You can give the report prior to that any time.
Get right to it. I'll yield my time on this issue to my fine colleague, Mrs. Calendar, who will provide the information necessary for this required update.
State law requires that acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying are reported out publicly. The information that I'll be providing at this time reflects the period from September 1st, 2016. It is on. September 1, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. During that time period, there were four cases reported in each, I'm sorry, in the area of violence. And the prior year, I know you'd like to know that during that same period, there had been 13. One case of vandalism, which was the same as the prior period. No cases in which weapons were involved, the same. One case of substance abuse, there were none during that same time period the previous year. Seven confirmed cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The prior year, there were two during that time period. Still a very low number, two to, you know, for district-wide, was a very low number. Seven still is a low number, so it's not concerning, in my opinion. The total number of unduplicated incidents reported was 13. There were 51 HIB trainings provided and 138 HIB programs provided. The way that they are defined and calculated changes a little bit, so if you look, there were 51 HIB trainings as opposed to 68 for the previous period, but there were 138 HIB programs as opposed to 103, because the categories shifted a little bit of where they would fit. So the total of the trainings and the programs was much greater during this time period than the previous. Okay? Thank you.
And then we'll open that for public comment. Yes, Mr. Senator?
When we open?
When we open for all public. Okay, great, thank you.
Decide to open now.
So then I'll continue on with my, my regular updates. The first meeting following the close of a month, we're required to report our suspensions. There were 13 suspensions in the month of January. So Mr. Preston will hand that around, and then that report will be coming around to you as I continue on with my report this evening. On March 30th, our Education Foundation will be hosting their Evening of the Stars right here at Middle School North. We want to make sure this is on everyone's calendar and keep it in the forefront. There'll be an announcement forthcoming of who the honorees are, and I believe we'll be having past grant recipients from our school district, folks that have applied for and been awarded grants from the foundation. We'll take the opportunity to come out that night and show some of the progress that they've made due to the generosity and the hard work of the foundation, and how that's been helpful for staff and certainly has impacted positively upon children. So hopefully, it will be a nice turnout on March 30th. Also, a very nice evening, it will be on the 2nd of March at 5:30 at Neptune High School. That's where Neptune, this year, will be hosting the 8th Grade Dialogue. We'll be sending our two overall student achievers to participate. We'll be inviting them, and they will RSVP. I think, though, it was finalized today, actually. So tomorrow morning, I should have the names of our overall student achievers, and we will then be inviting them and their families to that dialogue. That's the event that we historically had had, historically, over the last few years, I've had at Sothard. This year, Neptune is hosting it. I believe there is an RSVP needed, Teresa, am I correct, Ms. George? So if you have not, if you plan on attending, I think you need to register. Ms. George can help you with that after the meeting. That is March 2nd, 5:30 in Neptune. Also, coming up at the end of this month into the beginning of March is Read Across America. As we had mentioned previously, we have extended an invitation to all of the board members who are available during the school day to read to some of our kindergarten classrooms. We have a lot of them. Ms. George is also gracious enough this evening to have a sign-up. Some folks have already signed up, and our youngsters are out at, you know, principals and our vice-principals in the schools are excited for your visitation, if in fact you're available. So if you would be kind enough, if you're willing to be a guest reader during that week of February 27th through March 3rd, see Ms. George after the meeting. We can fill in some of those time slots. I know that some of us already have volunteered, and if you haven't and you want to do that, that sign-up sheet is there for you as well. Yes, Ms. George?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Last week was School Counselor Week. Mrs. Calendar and myself, along with the entire team, took the opportunity to, you know, celebrate the fine work that our school counselors do, and, you know, like so many of our staff members. America's become a funny place, you know? We have Blue Suit Week, and, but certainly, we have to take the opportunity to pay respect to the individuals. I just like staff appreciation, because everyone's important. But we do separate these things out, so we took the opportunity to, you know, I certainly sent a letter out to all of our counselors and sent out, obviously, a tweet. And every time I bumped into one of the counselors, I made sure I went out of my way to thank them for the fine work they do. You know, sometimes, that important work is just assumed, or it goes so unnoticed. But when a child is in crisis, or even a staff member is in crisis, the counselor is so critical to support that child and get them the support they need to get, you know, back into a comfortable and normal environment so that they can be successful, not only in the classroom, but in their, in all walks of their life. So we're very fortunate to have a strong commitment to counseling in our district, and we have a great staff of guidance counselors throughout this school district. So I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to publicly, at our monthly board meeting, to thank our school counselors. They are among the finest anywhere. Recently, at Memorial Elementary School, we had a ribbon-cutting event for our Bulldog Think Tank and STEM Innovation, Innovation STEM stations. And you're aware of this. I know that all of you were invited, no, that's a bad joke. None of us were invited. It was oversight on my part, and I have to take ownership for that. But what we are going to do is give you a personal tour that Ms. Angle has agreed to coordinate for us. So she'll be sending you an email with some dates or something like that, and we'll get you out to the school. But really, what happened was, the winner of the grants, the teachers that won the grant from Ocean First, who we recognized here at the board a couple of weeks back, a couple of months back now, they invited the Ocean First grant, which was a $10,000 grant, if you remember, First Energy. Our friends from the foundation, Mr. Gurman was present, because he was the past chairman of the Ed Foundation, who was invited, as well as the local PTA there. And it was really a wonderful day. I so happened to be doing my Cup of Joe, so I was fortunate enough to be in the building and celebrate with them. So my apologies to the board publicly, but trust me, we will certainly have you out and give you an opportunity to see that lab and learn the importance of it and the impact it's having on our students. Both our special education students and our general ed students are flourishing in that environment, but it is really well-thought-out, and I don't want to go into the whole presentation, but you can see the wide gamut of individuals that were active in the writing of the grant and the why they did it, the reasons for it, and how it's going to impact our autistic populations and our kids in great risk and great need. So I think it's an exciting lab. It's right in the media center. If you follow me on Twitter, and I encourage you all to do that, you would see some of the pictures there. But Ms. Angle has been so thoughtful to say, why don't we invite the board out? So we'll be putting something out there. In fact, yes, yesterday, we held our monthly leadership meeting in the lab. It was a lot of fun and stimulating time with our, with our leadership team. So we want to, we'll be getting that out to you in the coming days. Student Board of Education Day. We had, I think it was Ms. Malley, am I right, that recommended or gave the thought process of having a student day where they do an actual board meeting, and we have student representations that serve as mock board members, and we go through the process. So I'm very, and our board president charged our vice president, Mr. Bonjavani, to spearhead that. I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with Mr. Bonjavani and Mr. Harvey recently, and we really put some meat around the bones, and we have a really wonderful program laid out for you. And I'll ask Mr. Bonjavani and Mr. Harvey maybe to speak about it. The first thing, before you do that, Mr. Bonjavani, the first thing that, there is yet another sign-up for you. Mr. Bonjavani had the idea of doing a front-load of information prior to the essay-writing and what you'll hear about. So we're going to have 5th grade assemblies in each of our five schools, and we're encouraging the board members to partner or come in individually, if you have time, to speak to the entire 5th grade about what it is to be a board member and boardmanship and the impact that, you know, you guys can have on the community. And Mr. Bonjavani can go into further detail on that. However, one thing from my perspective at our retreat, which we'll talk about in a minute, we talked about doing an open-mic segment on the board work. I think that we're going to do this, I know that we're going to do this on March 24th, correction, May 24th will be our Student Board Day. That's the day that I'll have the gentlemen from open-mic out to work with us and have the opportunity to do that. We'll really have a wonderful day. So, Mr. Bonjavani, if it's your pleasure to add some details around that or work with Mr. Harvey to do so.
I'll say something real quick, and then I'll turn it over to you. When we talk about front-loading and going in and talking to the students, I think that if you talk to students, they would probably have some idea of what a mayor does in town, and parents would probably have an idea of what mayor does in town, but I would think that most of the students, because their parents so infrequently, really don't understand what a Board of Ed does. So it might be a great opportunity to go in, and since it fits in with the civics lesson, which you're going to talk about, it's really just an idea, it's just a short presentation, 20, 25 minutes, just to tell the kids, students, here's what we do. Here's, here's how we impact your learning. Why don't you pick up from there?
With the sign-in sheet, we, that we're talking, Mr. Isol was talking about, we have two dates for each school, and we're trying to get it done before March 1st, because we want the essay contest to take place during the month of March. But if that is not possible with the dates that were provided, we can reach out to the school to get more dates in order for the board members to attend. We are very excited about this. This is similar to what 7th grade does for the Student Government Day every May that we have. So we chose 5th grade because of the nature of the standards that are in the 5th grade curriculum and the importance of encouraging participation in government. We're excited to announce that this year, we will be organizing Howell Township Public Schools' first Student Board of Education Day. This day will recognize the hard work and dedication of the members of the Board of Education and allow students to experience the important role each member plays in the education of our students. On May 24th, selected 5th grade students will serve as members of the Board of Education, attend committee meetings, and learn about the responsibilities members of the board assume in the operation of our schools. A total of 15 students, three from each 3- to 5 school, will be selected based on their response to a writing prompt. This year's writing prompt will be, "If you were to serve as a member of the Howell Township Board of Education, what policies would you implement and support in order to promote a positive learning environment for all students?" Teachers will distribute and collect the completed essays during the month of March. In order to assist in the kicking off of the event, we are inviting the members of the board to come out to each 3- to 5 school and briefly meet with the 5th grade students over the next two weeks to help promote Howell Township Public Schools' first annual Student Board of Education Day. We've created a schedule of available dates for each school and look forward to you being a part of this exciting event. And again, if those dates are not able to be worked out, we can come up, reach out to the schools, get new ones.
I think one of the important parts here is we refer to it as a day and understand that we really are talking about making a day of it, meaning those students will come for part of the day to the board office and get to sit, certainly not disrupt business, but get to sit with certain members as staff, certain directors, and see what they do in their capacity to support the actions of the board. They will have already heard from some of the board members as we go into the schools and talk about our portion in it, and then they will have the opportunity that night to come sit on the table, at the table here with us, and we'll let them be the board members for a short time, and then we'll move on with the rest of the business. But I think it's really a great opportunity for, for the students and for the parents of those who want to get involved to learn more about the actual actions that happen at this table and in our meetings. So thank you so much for stepping up and taking care of this.
I'm thinking that's going to be a great discussion section. You know, we can have items for discussion and have, as we do here at the board, and have our young board members. And I think it'll be a great experience. And hey, we'll probably pick up some good points.
I'm afraid of what they might suggest.
Nah, never be afraid.
So, you know, the, again, this is a think-tank portion of our launch of this at this point, but some of the thought process was to have them up to the board office to see the roles that are happening within the board office, but not only that, to actually do some mock committee meetings where they'll be assigned to committees, and the others will serve as the citizen members. So it could be really some good dialogue. Of course, we would work with them. Board members would all be invited up to the building that day, not that you need an invitation to the building, but to participate in that program. And then the thought process was maybe we open that night at 6:00 to do that portion of the meeting, and then we do our regular business at 7:00. So that's the thought process, and then we'll be able to capture this all and share it with our community through the open-mic piece. So I think it'll be a really successful day, an exciting day, and it should also be a lot of fun in the process of learning, right? Questions about that for either Mr. Harvey, Mr. Bonjavani, or myself? Okay.
You've done a terrific job so far, I'm looking forward to seeing you.
The schedule, Mrs. George has it, and will be sharing it out to all the board members. So if you can look at the schedule for the various schools, for those five schools, and if you find that you're available for one or more of those days and would like to participate in it, please get back to Mrs. George by, do we pick a day? Have it by Monday. If we can get it as soon as possible, really, so that we can make sure that each school is covered with at least one member, if not more. And we're really talking about a short session, but it's just a chance to get in front of the student body and talk about what we do.
And even if you have time tonight to take a look at the schedule, you can sign up tonight.
Yep.
She has the working document. Okay, moving on. Last time we were together, I mentioned there were some wonderful opportunities for professional learning that we've participated in it. I mentioned the Future Ready Conference up in Newark last month that we attended. It was really an enriching experience and both from a point to be able to share our work in Howell, as well as learn from some of our sister districts across the state. It was actually a Northeast regional summit that they held. From that, they announced a Future Ready New Jersey program, which they had launched with NJIT previously about a year ago. They're now, again, putting some, some substance to that, and they've, they're going through a process to create a certification process for school districts in terms of being future-ready. And I'm very proud to say that our team, there were a number of administrators and teachers that collaborated on that two-day conference, have been selected to participate in the development of that certification process. So Mr. Preston will be a member of the curriculum work that's happening. Two of our teachers will be working on committees. Ms. Angle will be on the tech portion of the committee, and I've been asked to serve as a member of the leadership committee of that work. So it's really exciting to be able to partner with districts across the state to develop something very meaningful. When I was speaking with the state, the folks in the state office, I said, you know, if you can come up with a program that would mirror something like the ESL Model Program, where districts would be available to help each other in terms of the growth in this area? And he said, you know, it's funny, you mentioned that, Mr. Isol, that's, we're coming up with a certification program, we're going to be announcing it tomorrow, would you be so kind to participate? So I, you know, sometimes I open my big mouth, and then I get put on. Anyway, so, but we're excited to be able to be part of that statewide work. We were down at Texmo, there was really some good innovative opportunities down there. for us to see that and we've taken some things back and the dialogue's continuing from the learning experiences that we had down at the TechSpo conference earlier. And then, most importantly, locally, and I know that you're all aware of this, we had our, I guess, our tri-annual retreat last month and it was really, as Mr. O'Brien mentioned on a Saturday, it was really awesome. I thought we really did some good work. We worked as a team around the areas of personalized learning. We talked about future branding, which the Board at that point charged community interactions to lead that work and then report back to the Board. So I know Mr. Bonjovani and I, who work collaboratively, Mr. Bonjovani chairs that meeting along with our fellow Board members here, are very excited about that endeavor and we look forward to embarking on that work at our next meeting later this month. So we'll be announcing that there. But certainly some good work. Also, from that, from that retreat, one of the things we talked about, having some substance in terms of dialogue, because we want to remain focused on students and good outcomes for kids and supporting staff in doing that, we determined that there should, once a month, if we have two meetings, it'll only be at the first meeting, we will develop a focus topic for us to have some dialogue around. Tonight, I emailed you all earlier today, we're going to be talking about the high school graduation requirements briefly tonight and the impact on some of our children, but we'll table that until discussion. So if you can move the high school graduation requirements to discussion if it's not printed. And then in the future, we will add an agenda item early in the agenda that's called Focus Topic and the topic will be listed there so that we're prepared to have some dialogue surrounding that. And we'll figure out a way to develop those topics collaboratively. It could be hot topics that we're dealing with as a school district, it could be board-related, but it is meant to continue our work and our commitment to looking beyond boilers and roofs, if you all know what I'm referencing, right? We don't want to just be a board that focuses on where the potholes are in the parking lots. We want to focus on avenues to support staff with children and support children outcomes and I think if we can have conversations at the dais about that, it will lead to better outcomes and it will keep us focused on that. So I thank you for your indulging in that work. So with that, I did warn you that this would be a little bit longer than my generally very concise reports. That does conclude my report this evening and I thank you for your patience. Mr. Sanisak.
Thank you. And I have two items to add to the superintendents and board secretaries' report. One is, you, some of you may gotten, may have gotten some alerts. There was an appellate division decision in a case known as Kane 1 and Kane 2, the Kane Federation of Teachers versus the dean regarding a rice notice. And the school board, New Jersey ASBO, our lawyer, and some other lawyers have weighed in, and their interpretation, the most harsh of them is that every time anybody, any employee's name appears on an agenda in the future, they will get a rice notice previously. It seems contradictory since a rice notice in the past was when someone's going to be spoken about in exec. The, again, the most draconian of the interpretations is that any item may end up getting pulled to exec. Mr. Giacobi, Mr. Wooders, and I've had some conversations about, so long as the Board doesn't pull anything to exec, we may not have to send out a certified letter to everybody who shows up. Theoretically, someone asks for a maternity leave and they're going to get a rice notice. It just doesn't seem to go. So there should be more coming, I'm sure. You've already heard, school boards has already sent it out, New Jersey ASBO has already sent it out. It's a hot topic all of a sudden. I guess what I want you to know tonight is that we're on top of it, we're following it, and we will make sure that if there are any actions that need to be different in how we conduct any of our business, we will be on top of it and take care of it. And if at some point in the future we have to warn you and say, we'll have to put that on for next meeting, that's because we will have to follow this new ruling. I also spoke to our counsel and I'll be speaking to Mr. Moretti and the advocacy team. They all believe it would be a good thing to lobby our legislators to pass some legislation to clean up this really, what I would personally consider an absurd application of the notice process under, under the old rice claim, so.
Sanisak, yes. If I could just add to that, in fact, we had a, Mr. Preston had a phone conference. I know you spoke, Mr. Wooders, Mr. Giacobi, and you were on Mr. Giacobi's office earlier this evening. So I am waiting for some clear legal opinions from our solicitors because rice is historically, hey, there could be some impact to your employment. So we would rice notice the employee. If we just start sending out blanket rice notices, it's going to give
A lot of confusion.
... a level of anxiety to staff members that's not necessary so that the Board is aware, and I want to be on the record for saying this, once I have a clear opinion about what this ruling means to our district, I will put together a brief video and send it to our staff so they have an understanding of why this may be occurring so that they're not in the dark. And certainly, once I have that, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Guston and Dr. Quinn, our presidents of our two associations on our property, so that they have a clear understanding and that they can then reach out to their, you know, state wides to get some input or some advice from them. But it would certainly just be, if this has to become the way business is conducted statewide, you know, obviously we're not going to break the law, we're going to comply, as silly as it may seem. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that, you know, we will keep our staff informed to hopefully reduce any angst that may accompany the term rice notice.
And although I already know we were doing a video, I assumed we would get email out to the Board, but the video's a good idea.
Mike. We talked, I will definitely do a video because I think it's important to hear it from the superintendent and then personnel and for your department, you guys will follow up in writing in a memo to everyone. But I've been a little, I haven't sent a lot of videos because the video then becomes the memo and they don't listen to me anymore. So generally, when I send the video, they kind of listen, the staff and the folks, they get it, but if you do it too much, then it becomes watered down. So I'm holding back for this because it's a big important issue.
Right. And the old language that Mr. Isola is referring to is, I have it highlighted on my copy because it seems to be contradictory to the decision, whose employment status may be adversely affected. So obviously, when someone's being reappointed or promoted or, it just doesn't seem to comply with the original rice interpretation.
Sanisak, Mr. Isola, I mean, it sounds to me like this misinterpretation will fail under its own weight at some point because it's going to be so disruptive to operations around the state.
Yes. All of, it's so disruptive, or so potentially disruptive, every one of our professional associations have already weighed in and it's going to get a lot of, but I just, I wanted to, I wanted the Board to know that it's out there and we will be dealing with it.
Right now, we have no need to make any changes to our operating procedures yet. Is that correct?
Not, not this evening, but over the next several days, we may firm up that for the next agenda, there's some weird stuff going on.
Are we receiving instruction from the Department of Education on this, related to it, or is this?
No, it is a, it's an appellate decision, published decision that the way the courts view it, we're all going to
But it seems to me that there's a lot of latitude for interpretation going on.
Yes.
So the supervisory body that's going to actually dictate to us the change in our procedures is who?
It is, it is now the law of the land because it's a published opinion. However, there's, there's a whole lot of
You understand where I'm going.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of conversation.
You're going to make sense of what
For example, and I don't want to get too deep into it, but under, if you violate the rice, the correction is to reverse the action. So it's really much ado about nothing. So more to come, I think, would be the best way to put that.
Right. I understand and I certainly hope someone makes sense of this.
But for the next agenda, you may be saying something, so we thought it was important to just make you aware of the decision. And if anybody is so inclined to read it as I am, I have copies of it, it's about 80 pages.
And just one more further point of clarification, this applies to public entities, not public schools. So, in fact, this comes out of, well, Kane University is a public school, it's a state college.
Let's be clear, I mean, let's be clear, the rice notice is a very important protection, you know, and
Absolutely.
And protects due process and certainly, I, you know, I
And one interpretation is actually waters it down and kind of like the video, it'll make it something people don't even recognize.
It's, it's going to end up being at the two ends of the spectrum. If everybody is riced for every time their name appears, they're either, you're either going to get really nervous when you see your name as a rice or you're going to get to a point where it's going to become white noise. Oh, it's just the boy who cried wolf.
I was approved for a learning session.
Take the, take the May meeting when we reappoint all our staff. That would be 1,200 rice notices. Our current practice is certified mail, $5.38 a letter.
Moving on, I guess.
Yes. I want to make one more, begging your indulgence. I don't have a lot usually reporting, but a gentleman who I believe Mr. Bonjovani, Mr. Gurman remember better than anybody else on the Board, Ms. Mangano through her husband who was on our first aid squad for a long time. We called him Butch, his given name was Carlton Gordon. He was a longtime employee of the district and a special officer in town and he passed away earlier this week and I'd just like to
Sorry to hear that.
Ask the Board to send your thoughts and prayers to the family and just recognize that he was a pretty interesting, he was at every board meeting and a longtime employee of the district.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
And with that, it's time for committee briefs and liaison reports.
Very good. I will start on my right this time. Ms. Mallie.
Operations, operations.
I'm just going to stand, let me just, I beg your indulgence, we have a new system. Thank you to Ms. Angle for getting it ready. So when I stand up and mess with the pots, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Operations has not met since our last meeting. We, I did meet with Mr. Sanisak earlier though and the new facility software has been implemented and is starting testing internally this week. So we have some employees actually going on and working with it. We haven't heard any complaints or negatives as of yet. We should know of any issues by the end of the week and if there are none, then we're going to go forward with that public meeting to be held for all the current users, to inform them of the new rules and to, and to train them on the new software. And then we will go live. We're hoping, currently looking to have it all up and running by, in mid to late March. That's what our plan is. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 1st. That's it.
6:00 P.M.
Thank you.
Our committee has not met, we'll set up a meeting on March 1st, I believe, also, at 7:00 P.M. following the operations committee meeting. I attended a sustainability program with Mr. Sanisak at New Jersey School Board on January 20th. I also attended the National School Board Association, basically Washington, they conceded this by God, Sanisak, on January 29th. The first couple of days, they updated us on current issues and we heard from a number of pre-members coming to us. On the 31st, we made our way over to the Capitol and we met staff members who are representatives of Smith, Senator Booker, Senator Lender, and we discussed how the federal district, such as how the money, which is currently, often 17% funded every now and then, it's shooting from, it's based on, I quote, some funds of, we were looking to see what the district's funding. Hopefully, we continue that, where advocacy, speaking to those people. On, February 4th, I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Board Leadership Regional Training Conference with Mr. Bonjovani, Mr. O'Brien. This past weekend, sorry, trying to get on the computer, I'm sorry. This past weekend, I attended the New Jersey School Boards Association Legislative Committee Meeting. They had Diana Pascale, Deputy Chief, external affairs officer for the New Jersey Department of Education, there to speak to us in regards to ESSA. She informed us that the state ESSA plan needs to be submitted by April 3rd and that the new education secretary, Betsy DeVos, has sent a letter stating all previous timelines will remain in effect. She said, even though the district's submitted plans yearly on the use of federal dollars, the state has not submitted a plan for the No Child Left Behind Act in 14 years. In the next few days, the state ESSA plans should be coming out for public input. They are recommending that board members, superintendents, and principals meet to come up with ideas on ESSA and submit those comments to the Department of Education and the district. Currently, they are not planning on changing any assessments such as the yearly testing for ELA and math for 308 and et cetera, as it is currently, it's still a federal law and the U.S. Department of Ed has not indicated any change in this. And they also have no plans to depart from POC going forward after the April 3rd submission from the state to the U.S. Department. They have 120 days to approve the state proposals, which leaves us in about August. If those proposals are approved, however, they would take effect for this current 2017, 18 school year. And the district plans will still be due at the end of June. Like Mr. Isola noted before, the next Monmouth County School Board meeting is March 2nd, which will be the eighth grade dialogue at Neptune High School.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Bonjovani.
Community interaction did meet and it was really nothing more than an update Mr. Isola gave to what's been going on. The next meeting is, is Tuesday, the 21st at Gribbling. I have to apologize, I will not be able to attend it, so if any of my fellow Board members know that they would be available for that meeting, it'd really be a great help if somebody could make sure that they're there just to, to lend support. We always like to have at least one Board member there. So that's at Gribbling on the 21st. I have one or two other comments that are not necessarily community interaction, but may I make them? We heard about a new law that was passed, we've heard a couple of things about advocacy. Mr. Gurman and Mrs. Mangano, I'm not sure if you're receiving it yet and, and Ms. Mallie, I'm hoping you are. One of the things that we get from National is, is the National Connections Digest. It comes daily and it has articles about things that are going on educationally, legally, administratively, tech pieces from across the country. If you are not getting it, please see Mr. Sanisak, let's make sure that you're on that list because what we have all too often found, and I think it's especially true now with a, with a new environment coming out of Washington, when something happens in one part of the country, sooner or later, it moves around. So it's always a good idea for us to know what's happening in Michigan, what's happening in California, just to be on the, on the alert and to look out for it. So I would strongly suggest that when you get those, I know the temptation is because it's a daily piece to just blow it away, take, take, take a glance, take really a glance at it. It's a, it's a good thing and if you're not getting it, okay. It comes from National, it's part of our National Connection benefits, so Mrs. George or Mr. Sanisak can make sure that, that you're on the list to get that item. The other thing I want to do is I want to comment on the leadership program that, that Tim and Al and I attended. I have said this before, every time I attend a session where board practices and leadership and things are going on with boards around the state, I want to come back and hug you all. You don't, you don't know, if you haven't been in those meetings, how well this board functions with each other. I want to commend all of you and thank all of you for allowing me to be part of that. And the last thing I want to do is just mention, and it came up at our retreat and it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, that we have been thinking about rebranding, looking at how we do our business. These are actually from two, two and a half years ago, maybe, I got them from National when I was doing some work for them and I'm going to read just one bullet from each side. Just a little reminder to ourselves, one side talks about, for anybody who doesn't have, a public board vision for, a school board vision for public education and the other side says to achieve our vision, public schools will have the following resources. Under a school board vision for public education, the first bullet, holding themselves accountable for the success of each child, leading to a high school graduation, high school graduation and a world-class education. I think the important part there is each child. And under your administration, under your leadership, Mr. Isola, that has been incredibly clear that what we do in the classes every day deals with each child and not just one side of the bell curve or the other. So, thank you. And the other, the other side, two, in terms of resources, the capacity to provide effective teachers, technology, and other resources. And again, I realize this is self-serving in some respects. I'm going to thank this Board for the commitment that we have made over and over and over again towards professional development, that in order to provide effective teachers, we need to be able to continue to be supportive with giving those staff members who are here or not here tonight, we need to make sure that they or not here tonight, we need to make sure that they have the resources needed to go do their job effectively every, every day. So, and that comes from this table through your desk. So, um, again, just a, a nice little piece to kind of remind us what we should be doing. So, thank you for indulging my box.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Bonjavani. Dr. Lo.
The education committee meet met this past Monday at seven P M. We did a basic field trip update. Um, field trips are approved every year, but just some new highlights, new trips, the Lakehurst Naval Base, integrated content, pinball, uh, monster golf, Asbury Park in Tinton Falls, and the Pine Grove Day Camp in Wall, all under the code of content tied to the curriculum. We did discuss some of our goals from last year. We made some suggestions to propose changes for this year, but we'd like to wait until our next meeting. Um, our citizen members weren't there. We'd like to get more input. We did talk about African American History Month, um, as Mr. Zola had stated earlier. Different activities are taking place, um, throughout the district during the month. Lots of learning experiences focused on student exploration of African American individuals that have had a positive impact. Um, and also, um, it was highlighted and facilitated with, um, nonfiction units in the E L A and the social studies curriculum. Month-long themes in the media center, supported by books and titles and African American authors, STEM activities and contributions in STEM by African Americans throughout history. Um, we also talked a little bit about the personalized learning. Mr. Isola and, um, Mr. Bonjavani covered that, but they did take that to the next step after our retreat and meet with their, um, skip teams and their administrative teams of those two buildings, K two and three five. We budget in reference to supervisory budgets. They're being submitted and under review and will be discussed at the Budget Committee, Finance Committee meeting. We did talk about the graduation requirements, so I'm not going to necessarily go into that, but we did talk about that at the, um, committee level. And, um, one of the other things that, um, we talked about at our retreat, Marissa Fleishman, who was on the board for a short period of time, talked about STEM and Y's, women and girls in science. And out of that discussion, um, Mr. Guzman, Larry, Mr. Gurman, I'm sorry, asked about what that gender breakdown looked like. And so in your minutes, um, overall, for the most part, in our algebra geometry, algebra classes and algebra and geometry classes, both at North and South, we actually have more females than males. So, yeah, that was a question that was asked and that's why we disaggregated data. We made sure that we were targeted. So, there are lots of programs through the Army Education Outreach and those are our students have opportunities to participate in, uh, these programs. And our next committee meeting is Monday, March sixth at seven P M.
Thank you.
Um, the policy committee has not met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet on Wednesday, February twenty second at five fifteen.
Thank you. I believe, um, absence safety, right? Any updates, uh?
Well, the biggest update would be the discussion item this evening.
Right.
And I believe we'll cover that. And, uh, legislation, I gave some of that on behalf of Mr. Moretti earlier in the discussion.
I just have one further update, sir.
Yes.
March second, I believe, Mr. Miller, for some reason, I'm looking at you, is the school board's tech day.
Yes.
At Mercer, right? I don't know if you announced that or not. I apologize.
No, I didn't announce it.
Uh, I know that I'm enrolled and Ms. Angle's enrolled. I don't know if, if any of the board members, I think we can take care of that for you if you need to be registered, right?
Very good. I believe that concludes our, uh?
Concludes committee briefs. Time for the first public comment.
Yes. And I know we have a public hearing section.
Yes, I'll open that as soon as I open the floor. Comments from the public may last forty-five minutes. Will be conducted in accordance with the board bylaw one six four point one. Individuals may be limited to three minutes each. With your permission, may the floor be open?
Please.
Please, uh, begin this session with comments on the E V V R, the Electronic Violence Vandalism Report and HIB that Mrs. Callender gave earlier as a public hearing. Are there any comments on that topic tonight?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We will close the public hearing on that topic.
Right.
And, uh, conclude the public, uh, comment section of the board meeting by asking if there are any general comments at this time. Still seeing none? May the floor be closed.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion items, we have five this evening.
Okay.
First one is the shared service, S E L three, S L E O three, sir.
I, uh, since I believe I requested, I'll, should I open? I will be happy to open. Not normally do that. I normally wait till the end. I'll open it up just to, uh, reference that, um, we had the opportunity to, uh, ask our superintendent to sit down with the chief of police and the township manager and work collaboratively to flesh out a potential expansion of our school resource officer programs in our district. And, uh, you know, uh, I can defer to you, Mr. Isola, if you want to talk a little more about that, just to frame it so that we can then?
Sure.
Discussion.
So, uh, years ago, there was a very vibrant school resource officer program. I believe there was, um?
Seven.
Seven officers, uh, inclusive of the high schools, serving our community. Uh, over the years, through budgetary, uh, restraints that, uh, dwindled down. Currently, there are two offices, uh, strictly assigned to the, uh, school resource officer positions. That's Officer McBride, who serves the elementary district and, um, Officer Steiner, who is over at the high school, two strong advocates of our school district and our community, um, and have been model SROs, quite frankly, uh, the two of them. There's been direction from the board over the last X amount of years and an emphasis on security and safety, as well as the importance of partnering with the police department to bring to our school meaningful programs, uh, putting police officers side by side with our student population where the, uh, students have the opportunity to see police in a positive light. And there's, uh, a bunch of assemblies and, and, and educational components that they enrich our students' daily activities with. So there's been, uh, visitation through this over the last few years and not only this board, but previous boards have given direction to explore opportunities when available. Certainly, this board did not opt, uh, or I should say previous board, did not opt post, uh, the, the Newtown disaster, you know, uh, situation up in, in Connecticut where the school shooting was, was, you know, so devastating for our country, but certainly into that community. We did not opt for the, uh, the, the private armed, uh, off, uh, uh, security guards. That's not what, what this board or previous or present administration is interested in in, in any shape. What we are and have always been as a board, interested in is providing meaningful, uh, partnership with the police department that is educational as well as a, a interest in security to safeguard our staff and our students and our, in our community. So there's an opportunity here through the town manager, uh, coordinating meeting with, as, uh, Mr. O'Brien mentioned, uh, himself and Mr. Bonjavani, as well as some administration with the police department and council members, uh, to discuss an opportunity for some shared service where we would work collaboratively to foster some of a shared cost environment, but to deliver more services directly to the school in exchange for that. So I think that kind of shapes it, sir. I, I don't know if I left anything out from your perspective. So, uh, it, it's for the board's discussion and certainly, uh, we can interject some technical support and, and give you the, the details a, as we know them today. I guess this is born, the opportunity, I should say, is born from a new legislation that has, uh, provided a new class three, uh, special officer, class three class. You, you probably are familiar with class two officers, summer help down the shore. They hire, uh, special officers to help with, with the busy season. Well, special threes are a specific new class created specifically to work as school resource officers in schools only. If there's a bank robbery down the block, the officer's not allowed to leave the school. They are specifically assigned to the school district in collaboration with the district and the, uh, chief of police in whatever community onboards these such officers.
I think also it's, uh, important for the board and purpose of discussion that there is a motion?
Yes, I've prepared a, an addendum motion this evening.
Which it might be helpful if you could read it into the record, just so the board has it fresh in their mind as they, you know, embark on the discussion.
Yes, I had, I had prepared it in preparation for the discussion as A one, uh, shared service agreement, S E L, S L E O three. I keep transposing those letters, I apologize. Authorized superintendent to develop and enter into a shared service agreement between township of Hal and Hal Township Board of Education, Education to provide the S L E O three program. Just simple. There is one thing that I think is very important and, um, the current SROs that Mr. Isola referred to, Mr. Steiner and, and, or Officer Steiner and Officer McBride would still continue in those roles. So this would supplement, not supplant. And I think that for those of you who have had interaction with either of them, you know how fine they are, and this would supplement their roles, not replace it.
And the purpose of this, uh, motion is not to create a program, but to authorize our superintendent to continue negotiations with the chief to flesh out a program and then come back later with an M O U to present to the board. Fair enough?
Correct.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Miller?
That is still to be exactly determined. The estimates right now are, um, there's an initial cost of about three hundred thousand and an annual cost of about a hundred and fifty, but those numbers are, I would say, generous. And that is still to be discussed as part of what Mr. Isola and Captain Mayfield would, would be, uh, investigating.
To clarify, the first year would be approximately up to?
Right, first year implementation would?
Then lower going forward.
Lower in, in subsequent years. This is going to possibly get complicated. There will be seven assignments, the way that we have discussed it. And please jump in if you think I say anything wrong, Mr. Isola. Seven assignments, each of the sister pairs of elementaries would have one assignment, which would be filled by two part-time individuals. That's why I'm delineating between an assignment and the number of humans. The number of actual people hired would be fourteen part-time people that would fill those seven roles. One each in the sister pairs and one full assignment, which would be two people, filling those hours in each of the middle schools. Does that make sense?
No.
No, they are not. They are continuing to be paid in full as sworn officers and have no part, they will still provide services to our students in our schools, but they will still be paid through the township budget. Because Officer McBride, actually, there's a, uh, we could get very deep into this and I assume that it'll be discussed at operations and safety. Officer McBride and Officer Steiner are both what in the, in the, we have called them SROs. Really, they're C S Os, which are community service officers. They're fully sworn officers. The analogy or the example that Mr. Isola gave about a bank robbery, if there's a bank robbery down the street, Officer McBride and Officer Steiner go to the bank robbery. They're a different class of, of, they will also service, uh, recreation, they'll service Saint Veronica's, they'll service the fair, they'll service, so they have other duties, but they will still be doing programs and some of, they have a higher level of training as well and they have a higher level of delivery of some of our, uh, quality character education. So they'll still be, we won't be losing that, this will be supplementing it. But these officers, by the way, the law was written, they are, they are only allowed to interact anywhere outside the school if they encounter it on their way to or from work. So, once they're in the school, they're there for the school and would not be able to be dispatched by the chief to another incident. Whereas, and I'm getting far afield here, I hope I'm not talking around you, they can be dispatched to other places at any given time.
Can I?
It'll be, that's still to be determined right now, the way it looks? Do you want to jump in, sir?
If I, if I might.
They will be part of the community, they will be guided and directed by the, uh, principals on a daily basis, because that's where they are. The security director and my department will have a seat at the table discussing their practices and, and whatnot. Mr. Preston and the curriculum side will have some input into what, um, content they deliver, whether it's, I use the example of stranger danger and Halloween candy and all those things that we had so much more robust under the old program. Have that on-the-knee eye contact with the kids in uni, while the policeman is in uniform, really to build that character ed and respect for law enforcement. So, everybody will have a place, but as far as the line of authority for them being a police officer, will be the chief of police, Chief Kudrick.
If I might, um, Mr. Miller, to further add to, Mr. Bonjavani and I were present at the meeting between the township manager and township committee and, um, the chief. And one of the things that we did was, um, uh, it was very clear from our perspective that while the board had a desire to see this, uh, explored and developed, it was something that we left to our superintendent, you know, to, uh, work collaboratively with the chief of police on, on how can that best fit our educational programs? And that was the critical objective because, uh, while it's also critical to have the benefits of an SRO program, it has to be congruent with what we're trying to do in terms of student achievement and, and many other programs that we've talked about here on the dais. So, um, from a ten thousand foot view, we said, okay, go ahead and start the process. And what we've seen, Mr. Bonjavani and I, uh, were part of that discussion, was that the chief of police and the superintendent really have put a lot of work into, uh, and still more work to be done on how can we, uh, effectively allocate resources through this law, which allows us now to have school, dedicated school resource officers who are strictly committed to our district. And while they may indeed answer to the chief, my understanding is that there's also going to be a level of input from building leadership in terms of how they interact and participate in, uh, advancing the curriculum and, and the objectives that the, uh, district sets forth. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and I guess just to simply answer your question, Mr. Miller, um, before we go too far upfield, we're still, and I guess what the agenda item suggests, which was coming out of discussion, was does the board want to continue to pursue this, uh, meaningful program? But to simply answer your question, the model that's to date has been discussed would provide a officer, regardless of full-time equivalent or not, at, uh, one officer per sister school pair and one at each of the middle school. That's where the seven coming from. Whether it's Officer McBride or, or part-time new pe, all that still needs to be ironed out, you know? But we, we, we need to get direction if in fact, because this has been on the board's, uh, in the previous board's, uh, agenda item for a while. We even met with the Old Bridge folks some, some, about eighteen months ago, uh, to see how they were doing it. So this has been a reoccurring item. This new law provides opportunity, uh, for us to embark on a shared service. And yeah, that means shared cost at some level. And whether or not, um, you know, uh, we, we want to proceed with that, uh, when I spoke with the building leadership, they felt that it was a, certainly a meaningful, uh, asset for our district to have in many different ways. So there was good support from building leadership on this topic. And, um, you know, I, I think it provides opportunity. But the simple question was, uh, how many officers and the impact? So we're looking at putting us, uh, an environment where we would do the one per pair a, at the elementary level and then one in each of the middle schools. That's where the number seven is coming from. But of course, that would all have to be vetted out through finance, through operations, through security.
And?
Oh, and?
Is that our share of it or is that, uh?
In, in year one. And I, I, I was, I hesitated, as you saw, to say that, because I think that is the upside of, that, that was our share.
That's our share, so?
Yes, there's, there's a lot of initial cost, um?
I think it's important to recognize that we're not paying for certain aspects that are the responsibility of the police department and the township. We're going to be paying for those aspects to support personnel in terms of the program, but, uh, other, other parts, uh, of the costs that are underlying, I think Mr. Bonjavani agreed, like certain aspects of training and equipment and everything else, that's not the responsibility of the, the school district. We're, we're engaged in, uh, supporting as a shared service, hiring and, and, and having those personnel costs there so we can provide those officers to the district, um, going forward. But the superintendent was adamant that he wanted to make sure that we were paying, uh, for the educational components, the, uh, the SRO components of it. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, for, for example, I, I said I cannot participate in the purchase of a firearm, you know? I know a police officer has to have a gun, but I don't think it's our place to buy that gun or to contribute to that, little things like that. But, you know, the, the chief's got to go through his, his protocols and figure out exactly what those needs look like. Nothing will be done without fully reporting to the board, obviously. The, the, the fact of the matter remains that, um, and, and, and this should not be lost. If in fact, this community, this school board, this- If in fact, this community, this school board, this town council feels that this is a meaningful program to have for the children and for the staff of this community, our taxpayers are going to absorb the cost of that. Whether it's in our budget or their budget, it's the same tax dollars that are supporting this. I don't play semantics well, I don't play little political games really well, you all know that about me. I'm very straight and direct. And I said that to the council and to the new mayor, who was nothing but gracious, quite frankly. I said it to the chief, at the end of the day, this will be a tax impact to our community. But if it is deemed meaningful and important enough to safeguard our staff and children at a higher level, then that's worthy of consideration in my book.
I totally agree, and I understand that's all coming from the taxpayer. But we have the two percent cap, and this is not an exception to the two percent cap.
Correct. And the one thing, and and thank you for, I just remembered, the one thing that we did put out at the table was that, you know, the governor has to speak. And if there were to be some surprise in in the funding, that would make this more difficult to consider. So.
And I, and you know, I I believe, I'd like to look around any other comments from board members, but I did have something I wanted to add in too. I view this as dollars that we spend in our budget towards our fire safety programs, sprinklers and training and everything else too. That's an aspect of safety and security that we we spend as part of it. And in the current environment that we have right now, it's obvious that this is an opportunity to invest in safety and security of our staff and our students. Something that we have seen, you know, a growing need for, depending on your personal opinion. It's something that we need to think about. And that's why it's important if the superintendent can go forward and work out with the chief of police in the township, a an appropriate shared service that meets all the objectives that he feels comfortable with, is consistent with the mission of the district, and achieves the objectives of making our district that much safer for our students and staff. I think it's a it's a it's a win. But certainly, I'd like to turn it back to any other board members, including Mr. Miller, if you have anything else that you'd like to say on this or questions. Okay?
So this motion is just for us to investigate this and then to report back and give us the facts?
Correct, Mr. Miller. My 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 understanding is before we proceed any further, we would want direction. I I don't I don't want to negotiate in anything other than good faith. So if the board has interest in this, let's find out what it really looks like. Let's bring it back to the board so that we then have the real facts. And and you heard some sketches of numbers and things like that. But is it the board's pleasure that I continue to pursue this on our behalf so that we could see if this is a, an environment that we can create through the shared service model and benefit our school district and our children and our staff for its for its benefit? So, that's what it asks for.
I'd like to, you know, clarify a little further too. Let's frame it. At the discussion that Mr. Bon Jivani and I were at, it was made clear by the chief that he would need to have this program up and running by May in order to begin preparation for a fall rollout. So, what we're looking at here is, we're asking our superintendent to go and actually develop a memorandum of understanding that clarifies the numbers and the engagement and the resources and everything else. And then bring that agreement back to the board for its consideration. So, what tonight we need to do is, do we as a board have consensus that that's something we want to see developed and brought back for our approval?
Correct.
Do we have consensus on that? Do we need?
It'll be A1, as I read, and and that will give the superintendent direction to develop that agreement. It still comes to the board for that for that vote. And it'll be on the, once we develop the agenda, I'm assuming the finance committee agenda will include that as an item.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good questions. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And anyone else further on this? Seeing none? Okay, we'll put A1 on. And next?
Next discussion on paperless board meetings. I I have to point out, Mr. Miller's been following along on his laptop, having, and Ms. Malley. So we have a beta test going on here. I believe it was Ms. Malley and Mr. Miller that-
Many years I've been asking for our single papers. The amount of paper that is created for each of our board meetings, not only the public board, each board member, I think we're talking about our packets, could be actually our packets this month, I think it's over a hundred pages. So, we could save a lot of money on printing, on the actual staff member standing there, getting all those printed. And the district does provide every board member with a computer, which me and Ms. Malley are using this evening, for us to follow along on the agenda. And if the public has the agenda up on the website, usually on Friday, the agenda's posted. So they could always print out what they need. And majority, I mean, unfortunately, currently, we don't have a lot of public members coming out to our meeting. And we have sometimes thirty, forty copies of agendas with maybe two or three people in the audience. So I did ask administration if we could look at possibly going paperless for our board meetings. Currently, we also receive meeting notices, email to us, and then in our packets, we'll have meeting notices of meetings that happened like a week or two before we even get the notice. So, that's why I wanted to bring that up.
And I'm complete support. I I was actually going to bring it up as well. So, that's why I brought my laptop today, because I was, wanted to see how easy it is to sit here and just follow the agenda on the computer. And there are programs available. I know that NJSBA has a Board Docs, is one of the programs that that is is available to help boards go paperless. So there are, there are options out there for us. And I really do believe that we have sustainability, we're we're trying to go green. We have, you know, a lot of, a lot of things going on in the, throughout the district to do that. And I think this would be a great way for us as a board to participate in that effort.
I I agree.
Mm-hmm, yes.
If I may, just in furtherance of that, if we could, and we will be putting it on with the board's consent on the operations committee. Our current agenda software has a upgrade component to run a board meeting. I would assume we would be projecting the image of the agenda for the public and some other fine points of that. Ms. Malley and Mr. Miller and I have already talked about some of that. We have a webinar set up from the New Jersey School Board Board Docs vendor that we also met in Washington, ironically. So, and it does tie together with the ESIP and with the sustainable that Mr. Miller talked about, and a whole lot of things start tying together. I think it'd be real good to have a all-encompassing view of that at operations, with your permission.
Yeah, let me let me preface by, first, Dr. Lo, you had wanted to say something.
It was pretty much what Mr. Miller was stating, that, you know, we we're as the leaders, we should be, you know, just as the students, we have a one-to-one initiative, we're doing great things in technology. So we just need to make sure publicly we're also walking our talk.
And was there anyone else that wanted to add? Yes.
I have a somewhat different perspective. I I spent so much of my life working with policy issues and looking at many specifics and and details that with voluminous documents and where it became very important to hone in on a particular item at a at a moment. And I guess, I had a couple of questions because I about this. When, let's first talk about the public coming. Are we talking about having hard copies of this for the public when they come here? And the question I'd ask is this. Not everyone coming to a meeting who cares about what's going on will have gone to the internet or to the computer to check this. And yet, they may have a real concern about something and not see the details in front of them. I think that can be a concern. I could see where we might reduce the number of of copies, but that's a concern. Second point I'd mention, and I'm I'm really being very open about this, is that when board members will sit and look at a screen, I know this, having seen this at the state legislature, the concern is that someone in the public thinks, well, that person's not paying attention to what's going on, because now they're going through the screens, they're not listening to the speaker, and they're, who knows what they're watching, maybe they're watching a movie or something. And that and that's a perception. And so when things are going well, it's fine. But when there's a contentious item or something which involves a lot of details and the like, or when someone comes here and is interested in the detail and doesn't have access, let's say, to that copy of the policy because they didn't bring it with them from the public, there could be a real concern. So I I'm wondering if we can get some sort of a balance here.
I I thank you, Mr. Germain.
I'm sorry, I just, one of the things, points of discussion we were talking about is actually having, alerting the public to print out, if they want to come to the meeting and discuss, that there would be something on the website itself saying, you know, please print out the agenda before you come to the meeting. So that would, they would, they would know that the agenda item they want to talk about, the only way they would know that it's on the agenda is to see it on on the on the website. So then there would be the notice, please print it out before you come. And, you know, if worst case, we could-
Right, right. I'm kind of saying, because we talked about that exact, in my office today, Ms. Malley and I were talking about our operation committee agenda. And that was one of the exact examples. So I think that'll be visited at operations. And maybe some solutions can be arrived at.
I understand Mr. Germain's concern, but I I will say that in terms of the public seeing what we're doing, if there's two or three of us who are looking at our laptops right now instead of looking at paper, certainly the question is, what are they doing? Whereas I think if every person has a a screen in front of them, it probably, or it hopefully becomes a little bit more obvious that this is how this board conducts business as opposed to printing out agendas. I mean, just a supposition.
Yes.
What we're also talking about in this program would allow us, or Mr. Sanders, to project the agenda onto the screen. So the public that's sitting here will actually see what we're seeing on the screen as to follow along through the meeting also. So, they, it's, you know, it's not like we're shutting them completely out. They'll have the opportunity, they won't see it on a device, they'll see it on the screen that's behind us right now.
We might need to make a screen back behind us.
So more of a rhetorical question, because that's really very good to hear. Let's assume there was a discussion about a particular policy, proposed policy, and there was a discussion about it. Or somebody was looking at budget and numbers. You could, if it was a a matter of great concern, you could project that page onto the screen.
That would-
Better now, that this way, currently, in our agenda, we don't have the policy.
Right.
So Mr. Sanders, if we had this up and running, we could actually put up the policy and put it up on the screen.
And and some of the-
That's great.
I think that would fall to our board secretary too, to be the one-
And I'll I'll just run it from here. One of the platforms that that we're looking at actually has what I refer to as a cheater screen, which would be a screen for the board to be looking at, so that would be up there if we if we had the the ability to have a screen there. So you could be looking at the public. Some presentation rooms have that as well. So, there's a number of different things. It is something, I think, Mr. Germain, I think thirty years ago, somebody had the idea of paperless. We haven't gotten there yet, so.
I have a question, just again, to follow up, I agree with you. I I I've been a director of a hospital for many years, and we went paperless years ago and used director's desk, which is another form. And all my documentation is delivered via my iPad. So when you go to a meeting now, there is no paper. And if you happen to be unlucky enough to forget your iPad or don't have juice, you're luck. But someone always manages to find a copy and print one out somewhere if they have to for someone. But my question is to Mr. Germain's point about, you know, how many copies do we print for each board meeting? Is this a statutory requirement or something? No. Okay, so we have total control-
Accommodation, and similar to, you know, I would ask tonight if you want to direct us to stop printing those extra copies in your mailbox, so be it.
If everyone here has a, is comfortable with technology and has a board, you know, has a compatible device and feels that they would prefer to use that for viewing the agenda, I think that's a great starting point, and we can start with that direction so that we can save. I'd like to know, for example, how much we're actually spending on paper for all this, so that we can anticipate. Because if we do engage in a program where we get software like, what is it called?
Board Docs.
There's a licensing fee. So what I would like to know from a numbers perspective is, we're going to be expending more on a licensing fee, but we're going to be saving X on the dollars.
We currently own a piece of software that we renew annually. That's called Minitrack, and that has a component where you can run the board meeting on it. Board Docs has a very similar price, but also, and this is something that I would have to discuss with-
It wouldn't be an increase in cost to the district?
Not significant. Board Board Docs is a little more expensive, but it comes with New Jersey School Board policy. Right now, we use Strauss Esme. The total cost is about pennies difference. So it's it's not actually a cost of that part of it. We may have a cost of of training to have Ms. Engel bring all the board up to date on how to do it and those kind of things, but we would be saving on paper. And not so much the paper itself, but each click on the copier costs money and to take probably an entire afternoon of Ms. George's time to to make all these copies. So there are definite savings.
I remember the days when a messenger would be coming to deliver the thing.
That was Butch.
That was Butch Gordon. He was the guy who brought the package to every one of our doors every week.
Really, that was?
I'm all for environmentally and fiscally, you know, you know, doing our part. As a board, though, we're going to be, you know, getting rid of paper, going paperless. But how is this going to impact the district? Is there an opportunity to, you know, take this further throughout the district?
Well, we are. I mean, we, when when I got on my, those of you who remember, I got on a copier tirade and a paper tirade, we were using forty-five million sheets a year. It sounds amazing, but we were buying it and it was going somewhere. And then we were, and Ms. Malley pointed this out to me earlier, then we were paying to send it to the dump at some point after we were done using it. So there is definitely a an ecological, operational, and a fiscal benefit to it. And my only concern, and and Mr. Germain and I come from a different, my only concern is that we can run a meeting with integrity and with, I don't want to use the word professionalism, but, you know, that we can, and there will be a training curve, I believe. That's my, I'm told I'm wrong by Ms. Malley and Mr. Miller, but I believe there will be a training curve at some point. But I I believe it's a worthy endeavor, and and some of Mr. Germain's points were my points to Ms. Malley earlier. And we we can get through that. I believe we can, and I believe, given all the benefits, it's something we've talked about.
The only thing we'll need to do is make sure that the the backup material is done-
It's copied the right way.
So that I'm not reading it this way. But I made the comment in front of you the other day, and I I say this jokingly, but only half jokingly. The other thing it will do is it will free up space in my house. In terms of right now, it is amazing how many piles, over the years, of agendas are piled in three different rooms.
And and I I understand and respect that. And I also recognize that sometimes you don't want to just throw it away because you don't know whether there's a confidential note in there or not. Ms. Malley and I talked earlier, on the March first meeting, will be a discussion of a a joint shredding day. So that we can-
Just one last piece about about Board Docs. The other nice thing about Board Docs is it does give you the ability that, instead of having to sit here and draw notes on my paper, and you can do the notes right on the on the copy here.
And some other versions, both Board Docs and some of the other software we're looking at, also can coordinate with the website and some other things that Ms. Engel's excited about, where we might be able to take some of the standalone silo software that we have and combine it together. So this could get to be a very big streamlining event as well.
So just to bring it all together, we're going to, oh, I'm sorry.
Another question about an archival record. Is, what about that?
Takes care of that as well, and it it creates our, and and it is, whichever one we pick, Board Docs does and so does Minitrack, it is compliant with DARM, which is the Division of Archives and Records Management. So it does cover that for our public records and our Oprah requirements.
So to bring it all together then, we're going to, we're authorizing you to go paperless for this board in terms of materials delivered electronically as opposed to no longer printing out hard copy papers. Is that correct? Everyone good with that? We're giving up the, am I going to give my binder, I guess?
Pick your mailboxes away.
You'll scan, you'll scan correspondence and send it to us? That would be good.
You get it scanned now and then you get a hard copy, Mr. Miller pointed that out.
So we're good with that as a thing, and then direct it further to go back to operations for further review and discussion of which program and software we're going to use going forward. Okay. We good on that? We have consensus? Terrific? Okay. Uh, we good on that? We have consensus? Terrific.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good discussion.
I believe the next one is Mr. Miller's board apparel.
Um, I noticed, uh, being county president and my trip to Washington DC, that many boards go to these meetings and, uh, trainings in apparel that actually says their district. So speaking to Mr. Sanisak, um, I know even our council has it, that at the board member's expense, but the district, the district permit us to get apparel, say, uh, golf shirts, whatever we chose, with the district name on it, that, so we could display our name when we go out to these events also. Um, I know Neptune, their president has a jacket that says president on it. I mean, many, many districts throughout Monmouth County and throughout the country, because we've seen it a lot in Washington DC, um, do this. So I just wanted to bring it up to see how the other board members felt about it and to see if the district would allow us to look into something to, and do that. At our own expense.
And after we come up with a new logo.
I think, and as we're, as we're engaged, we could put this as a, a sidecar to the rebranding.
Rebranding. And, and it's, it's, it's been done before. It was done with the circle. It was done with the trees. Um, and I think it's, I, I will get some costs and.
Obviously, the.
And mockups.
The, the actual facilitation of the creation of these, of the, the boardware will be, uh, responsibility through your office, but.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll start that process. And I believe Mr. Bonjovani said it, it sounded somewhat tongue in cheek, but I think maybe it goes along with the rebranding and whether there will or won't be a, a new logo. Maybe in the meantime, we could just have Hal Board of Ed or, or the, the current circle that some of the departments have.
I think you have consensus to go ahead with that.
Got it.
I like mine in pink lame.
I already ordered it in pink lame. How do I know?
Moving.
I'm sorry.
Moving on. There we go.
Uh, gluten-free options, I believe Ms. Mangano asked, uh, for, uh, that discussion item.
Yeah, um, I was just looking into, and it was brought to my attention, that some of the cafeterios are not, um, not supplying gluten-free menus to the kids with celiac disease and stuff like that. So when I spoke to Mr. O'Brien about it, he discussed with me to maybe look into some of those items, to see the prices of that and to bring it to, you know, Audrey McDonald's, uh, to discuss, maybe trying to get some of more of the options in the schools for those kids so that they can feel as part as, as part as, with the other kids, um, to, to sit with them and eat with, you know, eat healthy. So I just think that's pretty important.
Sure. Have we had an opportunity to?
Please give me a call tomorrow. Um, they all have gluten-free options. They even have procedures, changing gloves, washing hands, prepping it on separate parchment paper. If there is a school, please don't tell me tonight, um, that you don't believe is, they, uh, they all have, um, two of the yogurts are gluten-free, hot dogs are always gluten-free without bread. They have specific protocols for that, whether it's celiac or whether it's, uh, uh, L. H. Danilo syndrome or any other where, where gluten-free is, is, um, the dietary either suggestion or requirement or peanut-free, all of those things. They, they have protocols for that. The school nurses deal with the. So what you just said, kind of, please let me know where it is that you have a concern on it, and I will address that, that staff members, or those staff members. All right?
Good. Well, I'm sure that, uh, once it's looked into, you know, you'll find out what's, uh, I'm glad to hear that they're, I'm glad to hear that.
We have, we have quite a, quite a large list in fact of, of things, so I'd, I'd be surprised, um, if it was not a miscommunication. They must not know how.
Well, sometimes if it's there, but people don't know it's there.
Right. We will take care of it.
I mean, maybe, maybe at the end of the day, go back with this to operations, figure out if, if there is something.
For operations, it's generated in our POS system, so long as the school nurse knows about it when that child comes up, their screen comes up and it says peanut allergy or celiac or.
Like maybe notating it on the school menu so that the parents are aware.
The menu has gluten-free options down the bottom. Uh, I'd look, so I will address it tomorrow. If you let me know what school your, your largest concern is, although I'm sure it's all of them.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? That's all I have?
I think, does that close it?
Oh, I'm sorry. High school graduation requirements, the focus topic. I was trying to get past it.
We are now, we are now at our focus topic, so, uh, okay.
Can you just talk off the first focus topic? Uh, but again, this is flawed from our retreat, but I think it's a really good idea to keep focus on, uh, those four things.
In, um, months, the Department of Education issued the new high school, uh, requirements that we have discussed at community interactions. We mentioned it here recently. Um, and we find ourselves being impacted for a very positive reason. So I'll, I'll, I'll explain. Our current eighth graders are the class of twenty twenty-one, right? So our current eighth graders are twenty twenty-one. They will be required to take and pass, uh, a certain level of mathematics in its POC exam. So for example, every high school graduate of twenty twenty-one must pass Algebra I, POC exam. Um, so why is that concerning to Howell Township K eight? Well, first of all, the standardized testing and the POC issue aside, we, because of our rigorous cost offerings and the success of our students, uh, find ourselves with students who currently, as early as seventh grade, sit for algebra. Certainly a large number of our eighth graders, uh, over three hundred of them, I believe, are enrolled in algebra in eighth grade. Um, in addition to geometry for those children who took algebra in seventh grade. So in eighth grade, we have both geometry and algebra taking place. With the recent, um, backlash to the POC and Pearson and all that stuff that, that was so, uh, you know, vibrant in the media, and we saw all this happening over, you know, specifically two years and including last year with the term test refusal, we're all familiar with that. Uh, if in fact, we have a student who refused or did not get a valid test score, passing or failing, by the way, for algebra, so an eighth grade student last year that took algebra, for example, but did not take the POC test, is now sitting in high school in a dilemma because they didn't sit for the test. You must sit, you must pass algebra or sit for all the POC tests that are offered, that you're in a class for, to be eligible for alternative graduation routes, pathways. So we could have students, uh, that find themselves in a snafu. Very recently, within the last week, we received, uh, information that is positive. What they've said is, forget Algebra I exclusively. And this could be some resolution, but I want to frame the background and see if there's any questions on this this evening. Um, and in the future, this will be more of your discussion. We'll just frame it for you. But I think this one's a little bit, got a little confusing this last week. We got recent updates that suggest if the child has not sat for the algebra test, we'll accept Geometry I. So what does that mean? We have eighth graders sitting in geometry. If they refused or were unable to take the algebra test as a seventh grader, if they take and pass geometry in eighth grade, they're good. They'll count that for high school, uh, requirement at the minimum math levels. Um, so we have some of our students that, uh, were, we have a very small group that is in this window here that we're talking about. We saw one of, at least one of them tonight. Uh, but we certainly will make them fully aware of that opportunity. Um, because otherwise the cost offerings don't exist. If you're not enrolled in the class, you can't take it. You can't take it in the spring window. They're saying maybe they'll open a fall window. So it gets very, uh, confusing. So this new information has created a new pathway for our current students to find resolution to this. I'm, I'm happy about this. But if indeed, and the other important parent notification piece, even though it is truly a student who technically refuses, um, we need parents in, of students who are in that situation to be fully aware that they could be, could be jeopardizing their future opportunity for a full high school graduation as their child progresses into high school in a year.
Talking about ongoing.
Ongoing, sure. Right? So if the, if the, if the Department of Education holds firm on this, and it appears that they are at this point, um, and this has been a topic that they've waffled a little bit on. Um, you know, they, and we've talked about it here. They said, hey, superintendents, make sure all your kids take the test. Hey, parent, it's okay. You can refuse. Right? They kind of double-talked a little bit on this topic, in my opinion, with great respect for the folks down at the Trenton who are working really hard to find resolutions to these problems. With that said, it created a little bit of a district versus its own community. Um, so they've taken a stance and said, no, every kid who's eligible for a POC test in a high school level class must take it. They don't even have to pass it, but they must take it. Um, and then the minimum required for mathematics is Algebra I. New pathways will say, well, if you pass geometry, that's a higher level, so you're good. So, so there's some pathways that have alleviated some of the, uh, restrictions that we were concerned about for our, really for our kids we just put into high school last year, so current ninth graders. Uh, but they're really part of the high school district, but certainly our current kids.
I have a question for you. The, the, basically the new pathways, does that, that cover the entire population of children who were already, you know, not, we're not talking about going forward, but, you know, the previous children who were affected by this. Has that alternate pathway given every one of those students an opportunity then to graduate?
Every student who's currently in high school will have an opportunity through this alternative pathway that they just created.
Right.
And every kid sitting in our school, if they take, well, they got to take test, you know, and pass. Uh, otherwise, they're going to have to try to go back and it's going to get complicated. So, so, yes, it exists. I don't know that the understanding in our community is there yet in the severity of getting behind the, participating in the POC. Uh, for that reason, not because you believe in POC or.
No, I understand. We're not taking a position one side or other. We're talking about getting information out to the public that they need to know.
Right. Like, we, we have someone who has already refused for this upcoming administration of the test and said, you know, we then went back and said, hey, are you aware? And the parent said, yes, do not give my child a test. Okay, fully aware, I have it in writing, because I wouldn't want the parent to come back and say, hey, I didn't know that, right? That's not fair. Then we compromise the kid's opportunity for future success. But if, if, we sent out the letter recently that you all saw. So that if the parent and the family is in acknowledgement of these new requirements, well, then they're making an informed decision, right?
Using a negative consent approach with the letter?
Letter was informational only. Uh, anyone who is refusing, specifically those children that have refused and are sitting in a high school class, uh, we're taking a very, uh, I'll use the word aggressive, but not negatively.
Proactive.
Proactive stance to inform them of the potential ramifications of that decision. You know, uh, so, so.
We're doing everything that we can within our power to let people know what the, uh, options are and what the, what the choices they're making mean for their children. Uh, okay, very good. Thank you.
If there's any dialogue or questions or support, you know, it wasn't a great launch of a focus topic, but it was relevant and timely.
It's important to our kids, so it's, uh, it's relevant.
It was relevant and timely, and you may be hearing about it because it's hitting the news in the last, I would say, two to three weeks. It's become, uh, out there a lot.
I'd like to open it up to the board. Yes?
Well, I, um, you know, there still is a resistance movement going on to POC overall. But there was a huge outreach to, um, the Assembly Education Committee this past week because they had, um, a bill, a resolution, I think, on Monday that would actually negate that graduation requirement. And it did pass, the education committee, and it's going to be going into the full assembly for approval. There's also an equivalent bill in, um, the Senate. It was ten in favor.
Ten in favor.
And one, and one abstained, but all the other ten members voted in favor. Not, not one against.
You said it's a resolution or?
It was, it was, it's an assembly committee resolution.
So it's a non-binding resolution.
But it moves forward into.
Into the full assembly.
Or possible action.
If it goes into the assembly as a non-binding resolution, they can't force the application to change.
Well, it, the language says. The language says that it's, they have thirty days after it's approved to revise it, or it could be negated.
Sounds like it's binding.
I don't think it's, I think it's binding.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you what.
It's number two fifteen, if you want to look it up. It's, it's ACR two fifteen.
ACR two fifteen?
Thank you, Ms. Malley. That's good, good information. And perhaps what we could do is, on our new paperless, uh, system, we could get a copy of that resolution sent out.
I will email it out to the board tomorrow.
I would like that.
Okay.
And also, yes.
By the way, I, I know Mr. Gorman's experience down at Trenton may be helpful here.
Yes, we do have, uh, we do have someone who's walked in those hallways.
Again, number one, we could, if we know the, the number of the bill, we could just go online right now and, and look at it and print it out. If you want to print it out or just look at it. But beyond that, I mean, obviously, the question is, is, you know, as Mr. Miller pointed out, is it a resolution? Is it concurrent resolution? Is it a joint resolution? Is it the going to voters? I mean, if we, if, in two seconds, if we looked it up, we'd know.
It's a concurrent resolution.
Do you know what Mr. Isola said earlier about when you say something? I'm going to ask you if you could lend us your expertise and coordinate with Mr. Sanisak and, and, uh, take a look at it.
Mr. Gorman, it's listed as a New Jersey Assembly concurrent resolution.
Okay, so if it's concurrent resolution, again, most bills, for them to have, take the force and effect of law, must be passed each house, the Assembly and the Senate, and has to be signed by the governor. However, if you have a, a constitutional amendment, it passes both houses, but then it either has to get two-thirds of a vote in each house the first year, or it has to be up for two straight year, two years and get a majority. And then it gets put on the ballot for the voters of the state to look at. So, uh, you know, again, at the moment, I don't think, you know, we have to look and see what it is. But what, what's the number on it? It's ACR what?
ACR two fifteen. I have it on right now. And it is currently not showing it as passed Assembly.
No, well, that's what.
It did on Mon, it happened on Monday.
Through the committee, you said.
The committee. It didn't, the committee, the education committee.
The committee structure, but it hasn't come to the Assembly yet for action.
It has to go to the Assembly. It's not up for a vote in the full assembly yet.
Yeah.
Just passed out a committee on Monday.
At the end of the day, it's an interesting development that certainly bodes well. And hopefully, uh, turns into something with some teeth. But we'll get more information and, uh, certainly, uh, the folks who are part of our legislative advocacy committee can dive a little deeper too. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I like the fact that we're able to jump right onto the internet and get the, uh.
Who voted for it? Who voted again?
Good. Sign of things to come. Look at what's going to happen. Uh, so moving forward, anything further on, uh, this, Mr. Isola? Do you have anything further to add? I think we've had a.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it and get the concept of the focus topic out there. Like I said earlier, I think we will make it a, one of the letters at the beginning of the agenda. So it's a standing item, uh, for, for the place to just put it in discussion.
Well, you know, when you say going forward focus, yes, I think as we, is that what you're talking about, building that up?
So that in March, we'll have a new focus topic about really figuring it out.
Let's, let's seed it in discussion, uh, with a, you know, I think that's a good place to put it, unless anyone has any objection. And going forward, uh, obviously, we'll ask our, I, I would encourage our chairs from their respective points of view, especially around education, to help, uh, shape, uh, the topics that we're going to focus on, working collaboratively together with our administration. You know, as you have opportunities to see things happen in your committee that you think are relevant, it's always very good. This is, after all, a board discussion, so it should be in large part generated by the board. And we, of course, always welcome collaboration and partnership from administration in that regard. So, uh, I look forward to seeing some of the topics as they're developed. And I think we can look back to our retreat and maybe take some of the things that we were talking about there and build upon them, because I know many of the topics that we covered were topics that we would have loved to continue the discussion. So, um, you know, and I think, uh, one of the things that I remember was, uh, we were just talking about Black History Month and the fact that a movie came up that was mentioned, uh, which I think. Hidden Figures, which, uh, I have a, a date with my daughters to go see, you know, and, uh, you know, I think there's so many different aspects of, uh, you know, parts of what we covered in the, in the retreat that could flesh out our agenda for the rest of the year. So, uh, thank you, everybody. I think that would be terrific. I'm looking forward to it. Uh, anything, uh, further? Any questions in the board? Comments?
Another issue, but.
Sure.
Are we done with that one?
Uh, is this some, uh, something that we want to bring up that's not on the regular list?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sure.
It's, it's, um, did, did you say you put copies of these in everyone's package? Okay, that's fine. Um, I just wanted to bring up, uh, I would like to actually respectfully submit some, um, legislation to the advocacy committee to keep an eye on. Um, it's, uh, it's. It did. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It's, um, there's, I, I believe, I don't know if these are concurrent, but they're. It's, um, there's, I, I believe, I don't know if these are concurrent, but there's, there's identical bills basically in, in the Senate and the Assembly. Um, I can give you the numbers, but it, it's, um, Senate 211 and the Assembly is 3798, and they're basic, basically authorizing the use of school bus monitoring systems. And, um, basically what this would allow, um, and hopefully come with grant money, that would be nice if it got through, um, to, uh, get, um, cameras on the buses to, uh, catch people who are basically blowing right through the stop sign and the signals on the buses.
Right. So it's gonna be an enhancement of the existing video technology to increase the ability to see around the periphery of the bus and, uh, with better quality?
Yeah, and it actually has, there's, there's rules about what it has to record, but then it, hopefully, and we're, we're monitoring it, will, uh, take away the need. Right now, if somebody goes through and a policeman doesn't see them, the driver has to go to court and testify, and there's sometimes some reluctance to do that, even though they're very concerned about the student's safety. This should add a little bit of teeth to that. We actually, prior to Ms. Malley bringing that up, I've already entered into a pilot with a company to put a dash cam on one bus to see how it works that is compliant with this bill. So we did parallel paths, but we will have some more information at operations.
Yes, we're all moving in the same direction.
Yeah, and it is ver, it's a very big issue, especially on some of the roads that, you know, 45 or 50 mile speed limit-
I do agree.
It, it, it can be devastating, and, and we'd rather be ahead of it than behind it, obviously.
Nothing gets my hackles up more than when I'm dropping my daughter off at, uh, the school in the morning and I see people coming through the, the school zone at a higher rate of speed, it just, uh, drives me absolutely nuts, and-
Wasn't me.
Wasn't you, no, I know, uh, but, uh-
I actually witness it on a weekly basis in front of my house, I, I live on Oakland, and almost, at least once a week, a car goes right through, and-
I, I did already put it on for advocacy and also, um, for safety to talk about the, the implementation of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that is tasked to, uh, our Legislative Advocacy Committee to, uh, you know, keep in track and monitor that. And obviously, it's great, as we see different bills out there that impact, uh, education one way or the other. If you have an opportunity to observe something, uh, share it with our committee and have them lend their expertise and focus on that. Thank you. Okay. I believe that concludes discussion.
May we take the consent agenda, sir?
I believe we're at that point, yeah.
Okay. Um, you had some, uh- Yeah, I have some readings.
We have some changes to read into the record?
Yes, some additions and some read-ins. Um, A2, A1 will be the SLA03, A2, out of executive, is amend leave of absence for teacher, amend the following leave of absence for Rebecca Murray, itinerant Spanish teacher, previously approved on January 4th, uh, the medical leave with pay with benefits from December 1, 2016 through February 6, 2017, and then the modification is extended medical leave from February 7, 2017 till March 31st, with pay less cost of substitute with benefits, 38 days. And A3 will be leave of absence for teacher, approve the following leave of absence for Donna Semco, grade one teacher at Taunton School, medical leave with pay with benefits February 1, 2017 through March 8, 2017, 23 sick to personal days, and an extended medical leave with pay less cost of substitute with benefits from March 9, 2017 till June 30, 2017, 71 days. And on the printed agenda, please, on 3000-6, insert the name Catherine with a C, A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E, DeFranza, D-E capital F-R-A-N-Z-A, step 2 MA, $52,500 prorated, April 17th or sooner. And, um, on 6, 3000-12, uh, please remove the name Jessica McPolin and replace it with Sherry Decorso, Sherry, S-H-E-R-I, D-E-C-O-R-S-A, capital C in there after the DE, and add the name Jamie Lee Holly, J-A-M-I-L-E-E, H-O-L-L-Y, at Land of Pines. And on 6005, insert the dates, January 14th to January 31st and February 1st to February 15th of two, all of 2017. With those changes, may I take it around, sir?
Please do.
Can I have a mover in second and first, please?
Move it.
Moved by Mrs. Malley, second by Mr. Miller. Now may I take it around, sir?
Please do.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?